Send it out to folks afterwards. The first slide here, you know, we have gotten a lot of questions about the T-shirts. Dr. Dixon was here yesterday and was kind enough to go out and visit some areas and so we were able to distribute some of them. But tomorrow, I've lost track of what day it is, I believe it's 14th today. And tomorrow's the 15th, we'll be distributing T-shirts. You know, a shift change right in the front lobby where folks are coming in. So if you didn't get one, there'll be an opportunity for you to get one. So happy hospital week. And along with this, the next thing I want to do is I want to read a letter. So just bear with me, it's a little bit longer than letters we would normally read. But this letter is from our first COVID positive patient that was in the ICU and was successfully discharged. And it's really a great, great letter, so I'm going to take a minute to read it. So it was, "Dear Mr. Stephen Roach, I want to thank you and the entire medical and support staff at Marlboro Hospital for my recent treatment of COVID-19. Being on a ventilator and in induced coma was a very stressful time for my family. Your team of nurses, doctors, lab technicians, and everyone involved couldn't have been more professional and caring. My wife Carol and I can't recall the names of those that treated me, but a few people stood out who not only did their job as two professionals, but showed a true passion for their work and caring for their patients. The first doctor that treated me in the ER was Dr. Tennyson and was able to add comfort as much as one can during a spinal temp. All the nurses were great. Fiona Gibson was exceptional. My wife couldn't have made it through those first days without Fiona, reaching out in the morning and evening to provide the comfort and updates of my condition. Dr. Kimberly Robinson told my wife every day and kept her informed of my condition and treatment. Her passion for what she does goes beyond the job and reflects in the care of her patients. All I can say is the pulmonology team, Dr. Robson, Dr. Salton, and Dr. Laudazza did a remarkable job. The case manager, Jennifer Robinson, was also instrumental in providing excellent communication and let Carol know she was already available for any questions and guidance. Once transferred out of the ICU where I could communicate on my own, Dr. Jabeen and Dr. Jabal were very thorough in their communication. I saw Dr. Jabal the day prior to being discharged. He asked questions about the family photos I had in my room. Again, this is a display of someone who brought a passion to their work beyond their professional skills. He reassured me I'd be fine and gave me great hope as I recover. The care on the floor after ICU was excellent. I can't remember all the nurses and staff I interacted with. So anyone left off this list, this is no indication of the quality of care they provided. As I became more aware of my condition, a few of the nurses I remember are Mary, Pam, Caitlin, and Adina. Again, a group that was professional, but also passionate and caring about their work. The support during the send-off when I was being discharged was remarkable. To have so many of the hospital staff line the halls and give me such applause will be something I will always remember. Again, my family, friends, and I are so grateful for the care that was given to me, producing a successful outcome. Sincerely, Philip and Carol, the team." So, thank you, everybody. All right, you can still hear me? So I'm going to keep going. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about stats again today. Maybe, and I have a couple of slides that I don't normally talk about, but I want to be able to just kind of paint a picture of where we're at, so people understand where we're headed. So, once again, this is from the Department of Public Health. This was yesterday's data that was updated yesterday at 4 o'clock. The new face, it shows, you know, new cases reported, confirmed cases, new deaths, and, you know, percent, as well as percent hospitalized. And as you know, this number is definitely decreasing as well as kind of the current cases currently in the ICU. So we're definitely seeing some positive trends on the statewide of the direction that we're headed with COVID, so it's encouraging. Here we go. Daily cumulative confirmed cases, the trend, and, you know, the kind of the bar graph. Once again, showing you that yes, we're still seeing COVID, but there's definitely, you know, a downtick in the amount of folks that are showing up positive. Number of tests performed, and this is staying pretty flat, the tests performed. But the, once again, another good indication, you know, that we're headed in the right direction is that the percentage of positive tests are, you know, continuing to, you know, to trend down. There are some variations, I think, day to day, you know, particularly on the weekends and when the data rolls out. So you do have to kind of look at the longer trend periods and not just at even a day or two. Because, you know, for example, on Sunday, no testing is done. So there's, you know, folks with, there's less data available. And then the amount of folks that, and what their symptoms are getting tested is constantly changing. So there's lots more asymptomatic patients being tested now. So lots of varying factors. I'm having a problem here. There we go. This is the daily cumulative COVID-19 hospitalizations. And this is, you know, great news because you continue to see the amount of folks in Massachusetts that are hospitalized with COVID decreasing. And, you know, our peak was right around 3875 at the end of April. And we've, you know, had a steady decrease. And the number here is the folks that are, you know, less than the previous date that required hospitalization. So this is definitely a number that, you know, is good to see and the less folks having to be admitted with COVID. This is our slide and what we're seeing here. So this is updated as of the 13th, a number of patients in the hospital with COVID. So, you know, we've had some, and this is a snapshot that's done each morning. And so while you can say, hey, you know, our high was 29 patients, it's not on this. That's just, depends on the time of day that it was taken. But we do look at this, we do have some, you know, fantastic new dashboards that have been built in Epic, so we can see where we are heading with COVID, where we see how many patients we have, how many ICU patients, the length of stay, the mortality, really kind of, really the information that we need to keep our, a really close eye on what's happening in the hospital, particularly around with, you know, COVID, folks presenting to the emergency department and then being admitted. So our ICU utilization, while it was very high, you know, even last week, it's, you know, I'm knocking on wood, it's taken a slight, you know, head in the right direction. And while we're still full, we're not in our surge space anymore. We do have a few less ventilated patients, which is very helpful. And I honestly, I can't thank everyone enough for all of the work that they did having that surge ICU open. Having it open, I understand, was a tremendous amount of stress to the entire organization, to the medical staff, the nursing staff, housekeeping facilities. There's not a, you know, a group that wasn't helping to make that successful, so thank you. I understand it was hard, but it was very important that we did it. And we should be proud that we were able to care for everyone that came to our door and that we were able to do what we needed to. So really great work. I'll talk about employee health in a moment. Operationally, I do just put this slide up because I do want to show folks that the emergency department arrivals are still pretty slow. We've, luckily, you know, in the last week, we haven't any days in the twenties anymore, so I would consider that progress. So we are beginning to see more folks show up in the emergency department, but it's still a very, very low number. You know, Wednesday, you know, the days that are in the 50 are feeling busy. And, you know, there's lots of workflow issues we need to continue to work through to, you know, further operationalize what we're doing. But, you know, folks aren't coming back to the hospital as much as we'd like. We're continuing working on doing PSA ads, working with, you know, outside of the physicians and the community to really get folks to come to the hospital because, you know, it is, we can safely take care of folks, folks here that don't have COVID as well. ICU bed occupancy, this is, you know, another slide, I just want to highlight that if you may remember last week when we talked about this slide, it was, you know, we were in the seventies and the non-surge only, we were at, you know, over 120% or 125% of bed availability based on surge. So our ICU capacity is, you know, still robust in the state and locally, but we're beginning to see, you know, a decreased utilization of ICU beds. And if you look at the website and then you can kind of view what everyone has in the hospital for COVID patients and their med surgeon and their ICU is that the numbers have dramatically decreased throughout the entire state, particularly in Boston, it's quite dramatic. So we're slowly following them, but, you know, our numbers are ticking down. Not as quickly as the Boston hospitals have, but we're definitely headed in the right direction. And this, these are a few, the next three slides are really talking about a little bit the demographics of COVID from an age standpoint. And once again, everyone's heard it, but COVID, you know, the average age for a COVID person in the state of Massachusetts is 53. And you'll see that it's kind of the distribution chart here on your left. And this is, you know, rates per 100,000. And while it looks pretty, it looks pretty equal, but, you know, there's certainly an elderly population group that's driving up the age overall. The more important piece is, and this chart is, you know, the bar graph displays it very well, but the average age of folks being hospitalized is 68. So they're definitely on the older side. So some of the things that we heard in the beginning, you know, are definitely, definitely holding true even in Massachusetts and here at Marlboro. And then unfortunately, you know, the, you know, there's no, there's no fortunate way, but the average age of folks passing away is 82. And this is going to be no surprise to folks, but the majority of them are coming from nursing homes. You know, we've had a total deaths now of 5,300. 3,200 of them have been from long-term facilities, so 61% of the deaths. So the nursing homes, you know, have certainly gotten hit very hard. And I should say long-term care facilities to be fair. And we have a lot of those in our area, a lot of them in Marlboro. We've certainly had our challenges of moments. Some of the nursing homes have taken, have taken made COVID units because there's some benefits to them, being able to take COVID patients from other, you know, other hospitals. And what's happened is when those folks have gotten sick, they've shown up here. So we've definitely seen, you know, an intake, you know, an increase in COVID patients from that. And it's been a challenge, but I think it's important for folks to understand that where the patients have been coming from for the most part for us and why that's happened. We've done a lot of work with the state, you know, having several conversations about them, some conversations with the town of Marlboro, city of Marlboro, and the mayor, getting his assistance along with the National Guard to make sure that the long-term care facilities in Marlboro have the resources that they need to be able to care for these folks. Because, you know, everyone, you know, everyone's got to care for them and, you know, they need to do it here as well as Marlboro. But to do it, you may have to make sure that the staff is trained correctly, that they have the right PPE, and that it's not just a pass-through to the hospital. So we've made some, I think, have some headway with that and I appreciate everyone's work on that. Just a couple of quick things, this is our hospital lab data and, you know, total lab testing, you know, we're still doing. You can see that we've really done a great job of our, from the early days of less than 100 tests to, you know, well over 100 tests a day. You know, the day of 18 is when our tents close, so it shows you how many patients were getting done out in the tent. We're still seeing a fair amount of positive testing. You know, it's, you know, we're beginning to see some more in the less than 30s and the 20th percentile, which is, which is good. And our, why this number is higher than you may see in the state is that the patients that we're testing, the majority of them, like over 90% of them, have symptoms. You know, so they're complaining, they've been exposed, and they have, you know, a cough, a fever, they've got two of the things that go along with having COVID. So it's not a big surprise that the patients that we're testing for COVID have COVID. All right, a little change of topics as I'm going to update a few things here. Surgical N95s. I think for the, for a long time, we're going to be talking about masks and continuing to educate folks and making sure everyone understands and is comfortable. And N95 is just the name, it defines how well a filter works, right? So it's making sure that, you know, that there's very few things that are getting through that mask filter. And these are the different kinds of them that we have here. So there's all sorts of different ones. Folks think that this mask is a surgical mask, it's not. It's actually an N95 and it fits most people very, very well. So we're actually fortunate to have it. But this is, this is the picture of them. So the right one is the, the right mask for you is the one that, you know, you get, that gets, you've either been fit tested or fit checked on and works. So just because you don't like the look of it, if it fits you correctly, that's the mask you should, you know, you should, you should fall in love with. And not the way it looks. So please continue to work with employee help and feel free to ask them questions. COVID testing, we've done 61 tests on employees. We've had nine positive employees, five have returned to work. And this is since the beginning over the last three months. I'm going to ask everyone once again, please do the self-awareming app. Everyone's done a fantastic job with this, I believe we were at 89% yesterday. And this is just great. So it shows great commitment and it's important to know, make sure that we're having folks check in. It's a requirement that we do it, but it's more important to make sure that people are understanding of how they feel and not coming to work and not reporting symptoms. So we do get folks through this, through the employee health that we've tested. But we want to make sure we're capturing everybody. Quick, just update on hand sanitizer, and this one has a safety alert. But with everything around PPE and hand sanitizer is that, you know, we've done a few things to make sure that we don't run out of hand sanitizer. So the normal Purell dispensers, while we're still getting some Purell, it's not as abundant as it was, you know, or available as it was a few months ago. So we have managed to get lots of hand sanitizer in a different format. So it's going to be dispensed in those bottles, it's going to be dispensed in the bottles that you see here in the bottom right. It works, it works, it works fine, there's no problems with it. But you will notice that it's not coming out as foam, it's a little bit more fluid, fluid-like. But it works fantastic, I actually like it quite a bit. So you'll, and it smells, you'll instantly know by the smell, it definitely smells like it's cleaning something. All right, I have a few weekly updates. I did talk about the ICU surge volume a little while ago. We have closed the ICU surge space upstairs in the PACU as of Monday. We, between today and tomorrow, we will investigate whether or not we give the space back to the operating room, the surgical suite, or if we're going to keep it, you know, kind of operationally ready for it to be surge-based again until early next week. And based on probably where we're at, we'll probably just, you know, leave it and can give it back to the surgical suite, you know, at the early next week. We could take it all down, but it's a lot of work to take it down and we don't need the PACU over the, over the weekend for sure. As, you know, as a surgical space. So we're keeping an eye on that. Surveillance testing is the screening testing that we've done for all patients getting admitted to the hospital. And, you know, the, it was originally called screening, the name is now changing to surveillance. We wanted to make sure that we, you know, changed something every couple of days, so this was, this was an easy one. So screening is now surveillance. And just to reiterate, the PPE for that is a screening person is someone that we don't suspect of having, they're not a PU, they're not COVID positive. It's just a, you know, a surgical mask and eye protection. So there's been lots of conversation and some concern, particularly from, you know, hospitals that are working at other sites. And we're just clarifying this and we're continuing to work with everyone here, the medical staff, and making sure folks understand how to order it and what to wear. Remdesivir. If you've been following the news that there's been a lot of talk about this and how this is getting allocated and originally lots of hospitals in Massachusetts weren't getting it. And then last, late last week, the state, I believe Friday evening, actually they came forward and they dedicated, they distributed it all to the hospitals that are based of need and how many patients that they had. So, you know, the Medical Center and Marlboro Hospital received quite a bit of it. And we've worked as a system to allocate that to the patients that, you know, kind of needed and would benefit, benefit that were kind of falling in the guidelines to need it. So that's been done. There's, you know, the state's looking at doing some more allocations of remdesivir. So we've been fortunate to be able to provide that for our patients. And Lisa, as well as Lisa in the pharmacy, as well as Dr. Robson, Dr. Sharma, have done a lot of work making sure this has been successful. So thank you. Facility. This is another thing that we'll be talking about as, as long as we're talking about masks. Everyone knows we've made an awful lot of changes here at the hospital very quickly to prepare for COVID. What we now need to do is, is really understand what we have to do moving forward. Is what needs to stay, what needs to go, what are the, what are the things that also have to be changed? So the requests now that are going into facilities, Mike Williams and myself reviewing those each week and, you know, I bring to the proper places to kind of review and decide if we're going to be moving forward with them. Some things are very simple. So it's really not the simple things, it's the things that are significant or in project size and financially because we need to be very careful of how we're spending money and making sure that we're spending it correctly. But, you know, that's, whether it's the emergency department, waiting room, negative air, negative pressure fans that we have all through the building, social distancing, spacing, and barriers. And what equipment do we need to move back, what doesn't? So there's a ton of work around this and when you, when you start thinking about it, it's significant. Behavioral health, Granger 3 has done a fantastic job of being able to move so that they could take on COVID-positive patients if needed. We've been doing screening of all patients or surveillance of all patients upstairs now for probably about 10 days. We didn't end up having one patient test positive. The staff did a great job kind of working through that, getting the patient isolated, keeping other patients safe. And I know that was a stressful time for them and I'm grateful for their flexibility in adapting to this. And this is something that's not going away. The Department of Mental Health has basically said that every behavioral health unit needs to be able to deal with a, screen patients and be able to deal with a COVID-positive patient. We are making, they are making some kind of further guidelines around that of where the COVID patient should go, but we're waiting for their final instructions. Command center hours are, have been changed as of today from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM as we need to start thinking really about, of, you know, kind of living and working with COVID. And what does that mean? So is, is how can we get back to some of the regular hospital work that we need, we need to get done that, you know, we haven't been doing for several months now? And, you know, take, continue to work on our COVID track, but also to say, all right, how do we, how do we get back to doing what we were doing prior to COVID? And this is going to be a slow transition to do these things as well, or as fast as it will, as fast as it can be to be safe and correctly is really probably the better way of saying it. But the command center is one of the first steps and we'll keep the command center open as long as we need to. But as the demand for that becomes less, we're going to continue to decrease the hours for it. You know, hospital business, you know, we started, we continue with board meetings, you know, we had PCA this month, PFAC. We're continuing with quality calls. So some of the things that you had seen and were participating prior to, you know, in February, we need to start thinking about these again and what we can, you know, put back into our workflow. We don't need to, it's not, it's not a flip of a switch, it's like a dimmer switch. It's how can we slowly start turning things on and get back to where we need to be without, without doing it too fast? So I've heard the expression dimmer switch and I think that's a nice way of thinking about it. I'm going to let Steve talk about, or Steve's going to talk about administrative pay and the budget for a few minutes and then I will talk about kind of what we're doing and next steps, so some more specifics for folks.
Yeah, sure, I'll start, a little bit just on the financials. We did close the month of April's financials, as everybody can see on the screen. Our largest variance is on the revenue side. Clearly, we've been challenged in relation to closing our outpatient services, et cetera. But on top of that, you can see we've had some very expensive purchase services. We've had lots of salary increase spend right now. You know, a lot of people manning the booths around. And all in, you know, the month of April resulted in a $3.2 million loss for the hospital, which is a significant decline in performance. And year-to-date, it's actually pushed us out to a little over $6 million. So when you combine the operations for March and for April together, that's about close to $5 million of our $6 million variance. So this is a pretty serious, significant issue that we're facing. As we move across from that and to talk a little bit about the go-forward plan on payroll, the system has made the decision to stop the administrative pay portion of what we're doing currently. As we all know, we're looking to restart most of our facilities next week. Some of our areas are already up and running a little bit. The challenge there will be whether or not patients trust us enough that we're safe enough to come back and we get the volume back. As we move forward through that process, we will be reducing some hours in areas if the patient volume is not there and asking staff to either take PTO or no pay time. At the same time with doing that, we will maintain people's benefits. We will be, continue paying the employer portion and the employee will still be responsible for the employee portion. This is unfortunate that we have to get to this point, but the financial impact of COVID has been significant. And honestly, over the last month and a half to two months, the system has put in the administrative pay. I think, you know, they've done a great job at EMS and more healthcare to ensure that we could make sure everybody wasn't harmed up until this point. So we will be managing it as we go forward and ideally we'll have our volume come back. But we're not 100% sure that will happen in the short term. So I just wanted to communicate that to you. I believe there's a communication coming out across the system, if it's not already out, to all the employees either today or tomorrow. So that is out there for you all and you can ask us any questions about that as we get into it. But all in, we're looking to, yeah, sad part is we're actually starting our budget for next year already. And we are going to have to make some estimates based on what our volumes are going to be. We're working with some outside agencies to determine that based on what has happened across the rest of the country and on how their volume has come back, how long it's taken to come back, et cetera. So we'll continue to monitor that and provide updates as we go. But we want to make sure everyone understood the financial implications of what we're dealing with right now. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I have a couple of slides left to go over, particularly kind of about how we're reopening. This is a slide that we're, you know, that's from the advisory board, but as we're talking about reopening and it's, it's very complicated, as folks can imagine. It's, you know, it's funny to think that's something that we've been doing so well for so long, two months ago, causes a total timeout for us to rethink of all of the steps and things that need to happen. So it's, it's going to start off slowly, but it's very important that we get folks back to work. We want them doing what they were hired to do. And we are going to, we're, we've started to do that in some areas, but we're going to continue to expand that as, as much as we safely can and as quick as we can. So, you know, that's the first part, you know. And then we're determining, you know, what kind of procedures need to be done. We're in the process of getting policies, policies written up. We have a spot on the website under, you know, under COVID for outpatient workflow. We need to work with the staff to get them back into the area and then, you know, continue to communicate this outside. So, you know, just to highlight, that's, there's, there's lots of work steps into this. And to give you an idea of what we're doing right here at Marlboro is, you know, if I forgot an outpatient service, please forgive me, but, you know, these are the areas that we're really looking at getting, you know, you know, back to work, you know, if they already, already haven't, starting next week. And several of these areas already have been back at work and have continued to kind of grow their schedules. And which is, which is important. There'll be some challenges on the flip side of that as, you know, we're, as we take staff away from doing what maybe they're working at the tent and getting them back to doing the other rules, is how do we balance that? So a lot, you know, it's not as, as I said, it's a dimmer switch, not a light switch. Some of the areas that I've, you know, there's been a lot of questions about are endoscopy, for example. You know, we've had a couple of meetings around this already with the providers and staff and we're having another meeting tomorrow to kind of follow up. But, you know, some of the, we have a negative pressure here at room at the hospital that we can use if, you know, we had a COVID-positive patient that had to get done and they weren't going to bring to the operating room. We do have Southborough set up and, you know, we're, the initial thought is, you know, one provider using three rooms and, you know, do six to eight cases a day to start off with and then kind of grow from there. And the, really, the first few days is going to be about workflow and making sure that we have all the work steps, work steps correctly and that we're not causing any problems. We don't want to, you know, create a problem and causing stress. But, you know, once, once we've had these things worked out, we're going to continue to grow as, and, you know, expand to where we can. Same holds true for surgical services. We're going to start off with two rooms a day, doing three, maybe four cases per day in each room. Some of that will depending on the, on the cases and what kind of the urgent need for cases to be done. The workflows, lots of, you know, scheduling urgent cases, you know, spacing out visits. And these are the items that we have to figure out and kind of what we have for volume and if hours have to change, you know. If we can only have X amount of people show up because the space isn't that big, then we may have to change what, how we're operationalizing, you know, over the short or kind of medium, long-term time. If we, the body, we used to do eight patients in, you know, in two or three hours of a certain service in a time and, but we can't now because we can't keep people socially distanced enough. If that, if that's something we're going to have to continue to follow, then we need to rethink that. So this is a moving target, you know. We're working on the registration process, getting people to be doing as much MyChart and registration online so that when they come in, all they need to do is be kind of checked in. We continue to update and revise the cleaning protocols and the time it takes to get things cleaned. Pre-op COVID testing is a big piece. We do have a guideline and we're ready to roll that out and we're going to have patients start going through the tent now to get their COVID test so they can have their procedure. We'll need to continue, you know, with a hospital greeter. I don't have an actual name for it, it's a name we're using for now, but someone to make sure that, you know, the right people are coming in, direct them where they're going, making sure that they're, that they're not a COVID patient. We're continuing not to have visitors at this time. We need to worry about how we're going to staff the tent, how to continue to have helping hands because, you know, the volume on the floors with COVID patients still is, you know, still exists. And, you know, other important tasks like mask cleaning. So there are a lot of steps that we're in the process of working out and, you know, so right now that I know there's a lot of questions, we're going to continue to kind of chip away at them and make progress. But, you know, I think it's exciting, we're looking forward to, you know, being able to offer the services out there for our patients and letting them know the hospital's safe and particularly, you know, for the outpatient services that they need that they're, they're, they should come back and we should provide them, you know. We want, we want our patients to be able to get the care, we want our staff to be able to work. So we're, we're taking a, you know, a measured approach to So, um, we're, we're taking a, you know, a measured approach to getting it done. Uh, you know, the last two slides, so if folks have questions, please ask, I know we've, we're a couple of minutes over, but I, I have some time if, if folks, uh, want to ask some questions, but, you know, it was happy Hospital Week and Nurses Week, uh, Nurses Week started last week, and, uh, my, you know, thanks, everybody, for, for everything, and we got tremendous support from our community, a nice message from the board, uh, and, you know, folks delivering baskets, uh, with the community support's been tremendous. Uh, I think I have one more slide, and that's it, and I don't know if there's anything else, or Steve, if you wanted, uh, to add anything?
Yeah, you know, basically, you know, thank you for all the hard work everybody's been putting in, totally understand the stress that everybody's under, um, the challenge being going forward, we do need to get our organization back open and, uh, convince our patients that we are safe, we're doing a lot of, uh, marketing and communications around that, um, and hopefully, uh, it's successful, it's an environment that's ever-changing, and we're tracking to see what happens in everybody else's market. Um, we will, you know, this is a new territory for everybody, so we'll see how it goes and how it progresses, but I really appreciate the efforts everybody's putting in on a regular basis. Any questions?
I don't know if you want to just open the lines up, John, and see if anybody wants to ask anything? All right, I'm gonna unmute everyone now.
Better than travel, no.
All right, everyone's unmuted, if you have a, uh, question, please go ahead and ask it, write it, if not.
John?
Yes?
John? This is more of a comment.
Why would you think that's happening, why would you think that's happening, Les?
Oh, you're, uh, not muted.
I muted him. Uh, uh, go ahead, whoever was asked a question.[1759.14]